...pitch about what National Coalition Protect Civil Freedoms does. This is a coalition of eighteen Muslim civil rights activist organizations that have come together to promote certain issues that nobody else was looking at. And in particular, it is what I guess I would describe as the government's war on ideology, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, in which particularly Muslims, but also peace activists, immigrants, a number of communities are being targeted and impacted, and in a particular way, particularly vicious way frankly. And that we feel that this is a national problem. This is created by the federal government, and only a national organization can solve it. In other words, it's one thing if you're having someone who is arrested in your own backyard, and you go to your local representative and you say, "I don't like what is happening here. I think this is unfair. This is unconscionable that you're treating them that way." Your representative's saying, "Fine, I'm one of 200 people in the House of Representatives. What do you want me to do about it? Get the another 100 people out there that feel the same way, and maybe I can make some help there." That's pretty much what my congressman said to me when we ran into the problem. And so you need a national organization that includes all of the various communities across the country that can speak with the same message. And when I go to my congressman, I want to say, "I've got 200,000, 500,000 people all across the country in different states that are supporting this, and that's why you want to listen." So, we've put out brochures here. I hope you will all take a look at these brochures. If you don't have a brochure, come up and get one. Kathy will pass these things out. And for that reason alone, I really hope that you will all join. You can join online, you go online, you just look up membership, sign up, and you will already simply by signing up give us extra power, extra ability to make our message. We have some important pieces of legislation that we want to get through, things that we think will correct the really major things that are going wrong. We'd actually like to get a lot of these people, these are all people whose cases we are following. These are people that we feel were unfairly incarcerated, we'd like to get them out of jail, we think we have a way to do that. We think we, I guess, refer to these particular things, but I don't want to take the time to do it now, but we can only do it if we have enough clout in Congress. We have a committee that's working on legal briefs and particular cases, and trying to get resources for lawyers who are defending people. We have a committee that is set up to do educational programs like this all over the country to teach Muslims and non-Muslims about what happens when their civil rights are taken away. And if anybody who is a non-Muslim believes that this is limited only to the Muslim community, they are very, very wrong. This is going to expand, and already has expanded into many other different kinds of communities, and it is crucial that we all stick together on this. We have a media committee that's going to try to bring prompt response so that fill the media void, and you probably all have kind of sense this media void, this silence, when people are being arrested, when Muslims are being attacked. We want to fill that void with what we believe is the truth about these cases. And we will have a very active community that deals with prisoners and families. You're going to hear from some of the families of some of the prisoners, and the kind of problems that they run into, and the kinds of support that they need. We're going to try to set up national chapters, and we're going to try to do some national fundraising. So these are things that the National Coalition is working on, and we really hope that you can be part of the solution, part of our organization. So now what we're going to do is, I want to introduce Shahid Luthar, who's the executive director of the Board Act, the Bill of Rights Defense Committee, and he's going to be the moderator for this panel. If I can just get his, Shahid has a very colorful biography, and I don't want to leave anything out of here. But among his other accomplishments, he is a singer, hip-hop artist. I remember one time he was leading a parade up in Albany. I didn't know where he was, but I could hear a sort of a musical note to the chanting. I'd never heard it before. I got up to the front and sure enough, there was Shahid up there, leading this thing, and it was a wonderful party. Civil rights lawyer, hip-hop artist, independent columnist, nonprofit leader, grassroots community organizer, singer and poet. Bill of Rights Defense Committee Executive Director, founded several grassroots groups across the country. Graduated in 2003 from Stanford Law School, and he serves on the board of the Steering Committee of the National Coalition. So, okay? Thanks for seeing.
So, thank you all for coming out this afternoon. It's fitting that we're in Martin Luther King Library on this particular weekend, when we're called on the legacy of civil rights in this country. Over the course of this afternoon, you're going to hear about a number of particular cases, including some of the folks from the MTC up here in law, and you're also going to hear about a series of policies that both explain the experiences that these individuals are adoring, and also portend threats to our democracy beyond individuals. We hope to share this information with you both, so that you can be better aware of your own rights, and in a position to assert your rights when called upon and the need presents itself, but also to empower you to raise your voices as change agents in your individual communities. We really encourage you to share the information that you'll hear about today with your friends and your neighbors, to take action on it in any of the millions of ways that we can each raise our voices, and you'll hear more about that as the activity continues. Just to introduce the folks who'll be on this panel coming up. Professor Peter Erlender, on my far right, is a professor of constitutional criminal law, as well as international humanitarian law at William Mitchell College of Law at St. Paul, Minnesota. He's the author of numerous academic articles, treatises, and commentary throughout domestic and international media. He was once the president of the National Lawyers Guild, which many of you might be familiar, if you're not. Absolutely crucial organization defending the rights of individuals targeted for state repression. He's also the director of the International Commingitarian Law Institute. Professor Erlender served as defense counsel for several cases emerging in the post-9/11 environment, including before two different appeals courts for the acquitted but now still detained Palestinian academic activist, Dr. Sami Al-Ayri. Professor Erlender is currently serving as the chairperson of the Board of Directors of the National Coalition to Protect Civil Freedoms. To his left, to my right, is Steve Downs, who you've just heard from. Steve graduated from Amherst College in Cornell Law School. He served in the Peace Corps in India for four years, and for over a quarter century, he investigated corrupt judges as a chief attorney in Albany for the New York State Commission on Judicial Conduct between 1975 and 2003. Steve is a co-founder of Project Salam, and has written extensively on the case of Yacine Rabb, who's the poster out in the back, and Mohammed Hussain in Albany, New York. He is the interim executive director of the Steering Committee of the Coalition to Protect Civil Freedoms. I'll invite Mr. Ross Newbonny to take a seat on the panel. Mr. Newbonny is practicing attorney in Northern Virginia area, where he's been since 1998. Since 9/11, he has courageously defended the most vulnerable part of society, from both varying government actions ranging from special registration requirements, the NCER program, to accusations of terrorism. As the outspoken champion of Muslim civil rights, Mr. Newbonny served as the interim executive director of the Coalition to Protect Civil Freedoms in 2011, for Steve came on this year. Is Shahid Sayed, please confirm this. So, Sayed is the Imam of our Hijra Islamic Center, one of the largest centers in Northern Virginia. He's also the president and founder of the Universal Justice Foundation, a civil rights organization. He served as the secretary general of the Muslim American Society, as well as the director of education and Islamic schools at ISNA, the Islamic Society of North America. He also serves on the board of directors of the Coalition. And then last, I'll invite to the panel Dr. Imad Al-Din Ahmed, who graduated cum laude from Harvard in 1970, and in 1975 obtained a PhD in astronomy and astrophysics from the University of Arizona. He's currently the president of the Menard of Freedom Institute, Islamic think tank. He's the author of many books and articles on several topics, including civil liberties, and he serves as an Islamic chaplain at American University, as well as a member of the Coalition to Protect Civil Freedoms. And actually, we've got a couple more people on the panel. Dr. Mel Underbacher. Mel, in the room? Yeah, please. Mel is an educator and a researcher formerly at the University of South Florida. She's a founding member of Friends for Human Rights, which began shortly after the arrest of Dr. Al-Ayri, as we referred earlier, in 2003. Since then, she's been focused on calling attention to the ongoing wave of preemptive prosecutions, many of which you'll hear about this afternoon, as well as the dangers of the Patriot Act. She's toured the country, educating the public about the erosion of civil rights and civil liberties since 9/11, screening a documentary, USA versus Al-Ayri, more than 50 times on campuses, churches, at mosques, and community centers. Mel serves as the education director of the Coalition. And then last, but certainly not least, I want to invite Maryam Abu Ali to...
Apparently she's had a sweat problem.
Wasn't able to make it.
She asked if somebody had helped her to have those further...
I would ask the other body to come.
Please, Maryam, she'll be speaking. The case of Ahmed Abu Ali, who is a US citizen, arrested in Saudi Arabia at the behest of the US government, when his family sued to gain access to him. He was indicted based on a confession that was obtained under torture, essentially tortured into a confession. He was convicted and is now serving a life sentence at a supermax prison in Colorado. We'll be hearing about this case.
Also, I just want to bring up Leila Yagi. Come up, sit up here also. Leila is the mother of Ziad Yagi, one of three young men who were just recently sentenced, two days ago, to very long prison sentences for crimes that I'm going to be talking about, but which are almost impossible to understand, and who were more than that. So, anyway, there we are. Shahid, you're going to do the, oh, are we going to have a skip? Oh, you're not going to skip? Okay. What we wanted to do first to start this off, we're going to have a little skip, and just need to take these two gentlemen for a moment, and I thought you've got to be the master of ceremonies. Come on up, you can, you don't get to sit down. One of the things, one of the reasons we want to do this skip is frankly, because a lot of people do not understand what their rights are. And when the time comes, when you're suddenly faced with a problem involving the FBI, that is not the time to start thinking about what your rights are. You need to know it beforehand, because frankly, they have techniques, they have learned techniques, long practices for years, on how to get people to talk, how to get people to say things if they wish that they hadn't later, and you will see how this process works. But we want to start getting everybody to understand how the process works in advance, so that you can think it out, whatever happens, you've got it good, you will know how to react. Okay, and so this is, we're going to do two short skits, by the way. This is, the first one is what not to do when the FBI comes knocking on your door, and the second one will be what you should do. Okay? Yes? Yes, Mr. Ahmed Sayed?
Yes, it's me.
Yes, this is, I'm Joe Martin, and this is my colleague Sam from the FBI. We'd just like to come and visit you. We have some outreach that we're trying to do here in the community.
Sure, come on in. Sure, come on. Can I get you some tea?
No. Well, we're fine, we're fine. It's a nice home you have here. I understand that you attend the Hijra Islamic Center, Big Center here in the area.
Yes.
And also, you're also a member of American Muslims for Palestine, aren't you?
Sometimes I help out a little bit with their activities.
Yeah, do you know, do you know Mahad Ziyad?
Yeah, I think I've heard of him, yeah.
Yeah, you know Mahad Ziyad, have you spoken to him in the last few years?
It's been a long time, maybe. Talked to him on the phone.
But you haven't seen him recently?
No, no, no.
Let me tell you, you know that you're, if you lie to a law enforcement officer, this could be five years in judgment, you know that, sir?
I don't know. I'm just trying to say.
Okay, well, we're not going to keep the pain going on too much longer. That's exactly, this is exactly what you do not do. Now, this is what you do do.
Yes, can I help you?
Yes, Ahmed Sayed?
Yes.
Yes, we're from the FBI. My name is Joe Martin, this is Sam. We're out here to do some outreach. You're not in trouble, we just want to talk to you. You want to do what else?
Maybe you could give me your card, so I can contact my lawyer, and he'll call you back.
I mean, you can make this easy, we just want to sit down and talk. I mean, unless you want to do it outside in front of everyone.
That's okay. If you can give me your cards, I'll contact my attorney, and then he'll contact you.
You don't want to talk to us, huh?
I guess so. If you can give me your card, I'll contact my attorney, and then he'll contact you.
All right, Sam, give them our cards. All right, well, you have a nice day, sir. All right, that's it. This is what you do. And the reason we say that, by the way, is, look, whether someone has committed a crime or an innocent person, there's no reason that anyone needs to speak to law enforcement without being represented by an attorney, because an attorney can sit down with you and debrief you on your specific situation, and whether that's the right thing for you to do. So, we'll entertain some questions if you have them, or whatever the, whatever the program says.
Can we have a round of applause for our new acting? Acting debut. Any questions, folks, out from the skip, just to put something to the finish?
Yes, I understand that the Fourth Amendment now is being reinterpreted a lot, of course, but what if your law enforcement says that they have a right to come in your house because you're under suspicion?
They have to come right without a search warrant.
But that's, a lot of them won't go with that anymore, right? They're just kind of bulling their way in.
You can't, I mean legally, they cannot. Technically, you could shoot them in some states. I mean, they can't, I mean, not that you wouldn't, but you can't.
The main point is, you do not give them consent because they're trying to bluff you.
Because I work in...
They say, "I have a right to come in." You say, "I don't recognize it." You know, you'll have to send an attorney to talk to my attorney, to convince my attorney that you have a right to come in.
I work in southeast DC, and they raid homes, they don't, they don't ask you any questions, they just come in and say...
Yeah, but then you have cause of action against them.
I see what you mean.
You're right, I'll cut, no, to Thomas and Kathy in just a second. There are certainly a number of ways in which the Fourth Amendment has been reinterpreted, both by courts and then applied very, or I should say, ignored very aggressively by various executive agencies. The point illustrated by the skip here in particular is that with respect to home entry, there is still a warrant requirement, and you can always waive any of your rights, and police will try any number of tricks to get you to waive your rights, whether that's in the context of knocking on your door. You see it a lot in traffic stops, as well as pedestrian stops. And there will often be an opportunity where cops will say something to the effect of, "Do you mind if I just look around a little bit?" And if you're in a car, that means you're going to spend three hours on the side of the road while they pick apart everything in your vehicle. And one of the key principles from this skip, I just want to draw out, is the opportunity to assert your rights, to say, in the context of a traffic stop, "I do not consent to a search in the context of your home invasion. I do not consent to a search. Give me your card, I'll have my lawyer contact you." That's always something that you can offer. Question for, go ahead.
Where some court decisions have unfortunately nibbled away at the Fourth Amendment, is that if you do let them in your house, they can then use anything they find in any way they want. That's why it's doubly important never to consent, so that if they go into your house, you have the argument that, "Yeah, they did go into my house, but it was not with my consent, and whatever they found is inadmissible."
Thomas and then Kathy.
That was going to be one of my questions, once he's in, what are your, what can you do to limit the damage once you've realized you've made that mistake? Second, a lot of us don't have lawyers, or don't have, you know, one on the top of our heads. Are there a way, who might one get in touch with? Is there a way of contacting a particular list or something?
Right, for the second question, the reason we did it this way is, "Give me your card, so I'll have my attorney contact you," is it gives you the opportunity to get an attorney if you don't have one. Because obviously, some people do actually have their attorney cards, and they give it to them and say, "Call my lawyer." And you take their cards so that you can pass it on to your lawyer once you find someone. Finding someone, of course, the ACLU, National Coalition, any of these organizations can be contacted to see if you can identify lawyers in your area who are familiar with these types of FBI interviews, where someone gets, you know, not, the FBI comes to their door, and they can call and see if there are any attorneys in their community who will, you know, who are willing to provide a return. As for the first question, and if you're not, if you fall into that mistake, obviously still, I mean, again, without a warrant, they can't continue also. Even so, even if they are invited, you know, they can't just go into an adjacent room and start looking without your permission again. But it gets more and more difficult, and that's why we say keep them out from, you know, the beginning. But if they're in the living room, then it should be confined to the living room. But if they see anything in the living room, you know, it becomes a part of their search. And so you just, we'll not give them permission to go further.
Before I turn to Steve and Peter, just one other piece on the finding a lawyer question. Perhaps the most useful organization you might be able to find a lawyer through, if ever, if you find yourself in a situation, is the National Lawyers Guild, the group that Peter was once the president of. It's a longstanding civil rights network within the legal field, and there are hundreds of members around the country. And so the National Lawyers Guild can often be a vehicle through which to find representation and get it.
Before we get other questions, Steve, I just want to make one other point, is that very often, what the FBI agents are looking to do is to get you in some sort of a situation where you will be compromised. They will say, "I tell you what, rather than charging you for lying or for your immigration problem, I want you to get out of the mosque and spy and tell us, you know, various other things." This is how they get informants. If they think that you're going, you're going to get a lawyer, very often they lose interest because they know this isn't going to work. And so I've had any number of times where people have called me and said, you know, "I've been contacted by the FBI, will you represent me?" I say, "Fine, I make a call." I never hear back from them, that's the end of it. And that doesn't mean that the interest of the FBI will go away, but it simply means that representation by a lawyer need not necessarily be a huge deal. It could be as simple as one phone call, and hopefully that would be the case.
Peter, did you have any thoughts on the question that Thomas raised about how to, say, pull, if you do, for instance, invite an agent into your home, and then want to pull it down?
I've got a, I've got a confession to make. I'm a constitutional law professor, and I didn't follow this advice, because it's scary. So, it's a great thing to say all this stuff, but the reality is, when the cops come to your door and they will ask you questions, it's really hard to say no. And so, I always tell cops, "Man, I would love to talk to you, but I've got to talk to a lawyer first. I'd love to talk to you, but I've got to talk to a lawyer first." Because you certainly don't want to tell that person who is within feet of you who was licensed to kill, anything that might upset them. But then, "Give me your card, and my lawyer says it's okay, hey, we can talk about anything." Number one. Number two is that theoretically, the Constitution protects us from the law of being abused. But in teaching constitutional law, I explain to my students, when you're out on a dark road late at night, and there's a guy with a gun and a license to use it, the Constitution means whatever that human being says it means, because they can take you out in a second if they decide to. So it's really wise to try and make sure that you don't put yourself in physical jeopardy while you're serving your rights. But it is true that theoretically, cops can't come into your home without a warrant. Does that mean that they'll follow the law? No. It means that you have a right to tell them to leave. And when they put a gun to your temple, then you have to say, "Well..."
I'm kind of mistaken, is that what that you did?
You know, so, you know, I don't want to be in a position of being a lawyer who says, "Well, this is what you should do, it's all you got." You know, it's not, it was sort of deafening to me. And so, I want to make sure that we temper this with the fact that there's a power relationship involved, and people in this relationship are scared to death, as I was. So, finding a situation where you can make it non-confrontational, but also make the point, "Man, I'd love to talk to you, but I've got to call my lawyer, so give me your card." That's the point that you want to get across. "Give me your card, so I can talk to my lawyer." And then, what Steve said, and what I said about them going away, is probable. If they don't have a warrant, they can't legally come into your home. Does that mean they won't come into your home without a warrant? No, they've got guns and are mean. If they do come into your home and things are happening, try and write everything down that's going on, get badge numbers, figure it, make a record of what's happening, so that at some time later, you can go to a lawyer, and they can pay for what they get. And that would be my suggestion in terms of a practical way to use the knowledge that you heard here.
I see a bunch of questions. Let me just throw one, just to extend this discussion here. Is your guidance any different for employees and businesses, the rights of business employees in the Fourth Amendment context, for instance, visited by the FBI, any different?
Well, the businesses have public areas and private areas. If it's an area that the public can access, the FBI can access that too. If it's a private area of a business, then the owner of the business can give them permission to go into that area. But that's an area of the corporation that the public doesn't have access to, so the FBI shouldn't have access to it either. Does it mean they'll respect that? No guarantee. But your answers should still be the same. If you want to talk to me, give me your card, and I'll, my attorney will call you. And I want everybody to say that. "Give me your card, I will have my lawyer call you." I want you to all say that, because that's really hard to do, and you're smiling, you're trying to be nice, you've got your boss there, you've got the FBI, you want to, and you want to pull that phrase out. And don't worry that you don't have a lawyer at that moment, and you'll find one. And just to give you a bit about the National Lawyers Guild, this organization was founded in 1937 by the lawyers who slept on the floor with the workers who took over the Ford plant in Flint, okay? These are the lawyers who defended the communists during the Carter era. These are the lawyers who defended the anti-war activists, and they were the lawyers that Schwerner, Cheney, and Goodman were working for when they were murdered and buried in the dike. So these lawyers want to help you. They are not on salary. They have their own practices that it's completely doing stuff because they're committed to trying to change the world. There's between 5,000 and 10,000 of them scattered all around the United States. There's no staff, there's no George Soros. These are individuals who exist without any invisible means of support, and the organization doesn't exist except insofar as people will it into being. And they're all over the country, so if you can get ahold of them, you'll find a network of people that may be able to help you. But it's not because they have a staff of lawyers and all this other stuff. It's human beings are going to say, "Holy crap, that's terrible, that happened." And if they, if they could squeeze out some time, they will, and they'll probably charge nothing, or a little bit, or maybe they know someone else who can do that. But there are networks of lawyers who do this stuff because they care about it, and if you can find those networks, your goal, it's a rare thing in the profession to have that attitude, but there's, it does exist, so...
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I see a bunch of hands, so let me just start on this side and work our way across. Kathy, do you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to say another, when the FBI comes to the door, and you're standing there with the door open, it's better to step outside and close the door, and then they're likely to let you come inside, or be looking around. And also, to reiterate, I'm a lawyer too, same thing happened to me when I didn't bow that voice either, you know, situation at least once, so... So maybe it's good to practice it with somebody and then be trying to get you to talk.
Great advice.
I just want to share that my experience, similar to what you're talking about. I was stopped for traffic reasons. I don't know what for, I don't remember what for. But I think that one officer had my license, and so I locked the door on the other side of the car. And another officer came up and said, open this door. And I thought, why do I have to open the door? I just gave him my license. And he got more and more irate. And I finally just, I opened the door. Eventually, they let me go. I felt I have a right to keep that door closed. I've already told them, given them what they're supposed to get. But I couldn't, I didn't know what to do. I gave in.
Well, that's Peter's advice, which is if you're right, but he's got a gun. But you raised it in court, but you say, it's an issue, say. Any questions about it?
Yeah, I'm, I know you see it on this TV, and I don't know if I've heard about it really happening, is they come to your door and then they sort of threaten, well, we'll go get a warrant, we'll trash your ass. I mean, did they actually do that? Or if they actually said anything that explicit? I mean, it's like, it could get them in trouble, or how does that work? Or is that just something on TV?
Yeah. The way this looks like was alluded to here. If they're fishing, and it's a fishing expedition, which they do in the Muslim community, they do in the activist community, peace activist community and so forth, is they're trying to get information. And they want the least resistance. FBI agents want to leave their office or wherever they're going, go into people's homes, talk to people, write it down in their notes, pass it up to their supervisors. And they don't want people saying, oh, we're going to call an attorney and so forth. That's why if they're just fishing, they're going to give up. And they'll come back to you at some other time when, you know, they go through their files again and say, oh, we need to talk to this person. So that's in general. If they specifically are going after someone, then yes, sometimes what they'll do is they'll raise the pressure. So if someone doesn't want to talk, they will threaten to get a warrant. Whether they do get it or not is a different issue. But usually, if you're the person whom the FBI is going to get a warrant against, I mean, that's all of the reason in the world not to talk. That means that they're there for a specific purpose and they want to search your home and so forth, or they want to eventually arrest you, depending on the situation. So I hope that that's helpful. Because if it's an expedition, you just shut the door in their face. If they have something that you need to protect, you need to shut the door in their face in order to exercise the Fifth Amendment right against self-imprisonation. And it doesn't take a lot to imprison people now in the U.S., as we've seen.
Other thoughts about warrants and how long they're on?
Well, in order to get a warrant, you need a reason to come into your house. And that is also, can be a problem for the FBI. They may say, if you don't talk to me, I'll get a warrant. But they're going to have to get a judge to sign it. They have to make some sort of a showing that they have a reason for it. And this may just.
Not difficult at all.
It's not difficult.
We've seen it in every criminal case. I mean, they sign them like, you know, giving out candy. The judge is signing these warrants.
But it's, again, it's a record that can be reviewed later. Before.
There's another, there's another important element to this. In many of these cases, when they approach you, they do it as a sketch. Say that it's, you know, you're not in any kind of trouble. We're just trying to outreach in the community. We're trying to build better relations in the community. And in some cases, it's true in the sense that they're recruiting spies. But, but if they are going to threaten you with a warrant, then whether it's true or not, they are now taking a totally different position. Now they're saying, well, actually, we have something against you. You are in trouble. And so at a very minimum, what was said, that the fact, the fact that they want to get a warrant against you means you have to. It no longer becomes that you have a right to assert these rights. You have to assert these rights for your own good. And furthermore, there's also the element, speaking personally, you know, I don't like to deal with people who are duplicitous. If I had, you know, when somebody comes up to me and says, I want to build better relations in the Muslim community, by temperament and by profession, my inclination is to say, wow, that's great. You know, let's sit down and let's, let's talk. But if, in fact, they have another agenda, then I have to, I have to rein that in. And I have to say, look, there's something else going on here. And one other thing, it's not just having an attorney. These guys don't like the light at all. I got a phone call from the FBI one time asking to meet with me for community relations and so on. And I think it probably was to try to recruit me as a spy. But whatever the truth is, my response was, well, let's meet. They said, they would like to meet at my office or yours. I said, why don't we just meet in a public place, like a restaurant? And they said, well, okay, if you insist. And I said, and if you don't mind, I'm going to have the head of our neighborhood, our civic federation there also participate in the conversation. And they said, no, absolutely not. And that was the end of the discussion. Never heard from them again.
Yeah, before we come back to your other listeners, there's a question. So you have one, right?
Um, yeah. Well, when they came to my brother's, to my parents' house, they had a search warrant. And all of us were in Albania taking a vacation. So they went in, we weren't there. And it's my dad's house, it's not my parents' house. So I don't understand. I mean, I think they waited for us to leave so they didn't have to deal with us, take a note and see what they're taking. Because they're essentially going to, you know, we're like four other adults living in the house and my parents included. So I don't know if you have any father in mind.
My dad's car is under, or my dad's, my aunt's under his. So they went through all of them.
And my dad's not in trouble. And like, if I was my dad or even if somebody came to my house looking for my son, I'd be like, wait, these are my stuff, I think.
Yeah, the ownership of the material is not so relevant to the scope of the rights to.
It's a search warrant.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, anytime, the point about search warrants to take away is that if police have the authority to search your house, they will do it. They won't need to ask. If they ask you anything, you always have the right to say no. And again, it can seem very different, especially given, you know, the very coercive nature of a lot of police interactions. But if they have a warrant, you will learn about it. And any threat to get a warrant is one you should, you should call the law. Let them go through the exercise. We have checks and balances, however deeply meaningless they are. Or.
The only way to answer that question is to look at the specific warrant and see what the warrant says about the scope of what can be searched.
Yeah.
So this could only be a general answer without seeing the warrant itself.
I just thought it was interesting that, like, they waited for us, all of us, to get to Kosovo and just not deal with us very much.
Again, that, that, in order to answer anything, you got to see what the judge authorized in that particular warrant to see much of it makes sense.
And I'm sure that probably was intended. In other words, once they get a warrant, they get to decide when to exercise that warrant. They have a specific time. But it could be, you know, a pretty lengthy time, which means they get to choose the day, the time, and the place to go and execute the warrant. So they waited because they didn't want that hassle, and that's why they did what they did. And it doesn't matter whose home it is. They believe that there's, you know, the legal information that they have a right to. It could be anywhere. The search warrant is for that place. And it doesn't matter if it's your father's home or whoever, they'll still, you know, go and do that.
I'll come back to you, let me get the rest of the questions. So someone's team, and you have one as well.
Yeah, just on this exact topic about the warrant. I learned from previous trainings that if you look at the scope of the warrant and you say, and coupled with saying, I do not consent to the search, it means that if they take anything else besides what's on the warrant, it's also in this one. So it's important if they do have a warrant to look at the warrant. And also, I don't, is that true? What I learned like a year ago? It's still true, right?
It's still true. Yes, there have been cases where they've not shown a warrant despite what you asked. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't ask. You should still ask.
You know, I don't look for, because I've actually been in the home of people who had the search warrant executed at that point. So I know exactly what happens. You know, I was able to have that benefit on more than one occasion because I got called by my client. Hey, the FBI is at my home. And I was able to go there and they were executing the warrant. But the point is, is that it's very difficult because even if they say, we're looking for the following things, believe me, they're going to take what they're going to take, no matter what you do or what you say. But as was said here before, if you're building a record, this is how you try to get some justice later on in court. But they will take whatever they want. And, you know, in Ahmed Abadi's case, they took books. They took, in Saudi Arabia, but in other people's, you know, they took anything that seemed strange to them. Anything that seemed strange to them because these FBI agents are trained, you know, these officers, yeah, you'll break the big case. And so if they see anything, they take kids' computers. They take anything that they think could potentially have information that would tie this person, you know, to terrorism or whatever it is. And then they'll sort it out. And they're very reluctant to give things back. And it's a bureaucracy. And it's, this is just the way it is. This is the abuse of power. This is what we're talking about. Why we have to stand up. If we don't, it's just going to happen more and more, and people are going to accept it. But the situation is difficult when it happens. So you really need to be trained how to at least minimize it so that less damage is done than otherwise would be.
We had a couple more questions over here. Do you have one?
Yeah. With regards to when your rights are being breached and you have, and you're documenting whatever. Is, I know there's like state-specific laws, but what's, what's, I guess, so maybe this question is, yeah, state-specific and would vary. But what's like the law or the policy with using video recorders? Because I've seen it like in the whole Occupy movement, that whole debacle with camera, camera people being, you know, whatever, fooded or taken, you know.
Great. I'm actually going to turn to some of the audience here and invite Thomas enough to you to share what you shared with me, that was very relevant to the point you're raising right here. Have we seen any examples, for instance, of the rights of videotape infringement? Any type of recent?
Yeah, certainly. In Maryland, there have been several cases. And there's one I just talked about today, where actually a White House press photographer who happened to witness an arrest of two Hispanics in Wheaton got roughed up and got his camera taken from him, got the chip removed, never got the chip back. So it was a case that was particularly bad, high-profile case where his, and he was then charged with disorderly conduct for slamming his head into the police car. And the, that case was dropped, but not before police made, you know, submitted that ludicrous story to the judge who threw it out. So police, even in a, even quote-unquote, in Montgomery County, Maryland, will engage in this kind of thing. I don't, they shouldn't. I don't know what the state laws are with respect to that. There have been other cases in Maryland where people videotaping police interactions have been prosecuted for that under the eavesdropping laws. Sort of a bizarre inversion of what those laws are supposed to be about. That seems to be something that varies from county to county. I think some prosecutors do it, others don't. That's all I know.
So you're right that it's a state-specific answer. Are there lots of opportunities here? And remember that question because we'll come back to it a little bit later in terms of opportunities to push back. Let's move it down.
I think there is an absolute right to videotape in public. Even though there's some laws against it, they should be thrown out when it gets to at least some higher courts, hopefully. I mean, who knows these days? Really, it shouldn't even be state-specific.
Yeah.
Can I just note that Kathy Manley is the chairwoman of the Commission of the National Coalition Protect Civil Freedoms and so.
The Legal Commission.
The Legal, what did I say?
Legal Commission.
Could I also just mention, this is sort of an interesting question. I haven't really thought about it. But if I had a camera and I was in my house and they were about to start a search, what would I film? Would it really be helpful filming them wandering around the house, collecting things? I'm not sure that it would be all that helpful. One thing that might really be helpful is to film myself saying to them, you have not shown me a warrant. I repeatedly asked for a warrant and you won't show it. And moreover, I just, I don't consent to the search. And, you know, to establish that. That in the end might be more useful than picking a bunch of agents wandering around and then getting more and more angry and calling them run out.
They want exception and they made.
Much more, much more I believe is to videotape what either they take because they never show up again unless they're pressing with your own records. Their own records, their own records are never consistent with what they actually take. So if you want to videotape the stuff they are collecting from your home, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think this should be.
They may not let you videotape because they're allowed to secure the scene where they're executing the warrant.
They can secure it, but I can run my camera.
They may not let you, but you can try. I think it's worth a try.
Yeah.
One more question over here, then we'll come back. And then probably a couple of questions.
I had a question on a situation I had when I was younger and involved in a peace movement, where you had law enforcement come to the house. And they didn't have a warrant. They wanted to come inside. We said, no. Asked them if they had a warrant. They said, no. I said, I'd like to speak to an attorney. They said, if I wanted to speak to an attorney, that I had to go down with it. Basically, I had to go down with, if I wasn't willing to have them come in the house, I had to go with them down to the station and I could wait for an attorney there.
If you're under arrest.
But they had no arrest warrant.
Then they can do that.
What should I have done in this?
Well, listen, key words for FDI.
Am I free to leave?
Secret Service? Yeah, Secret Service even.
Key words here, follow me. Let's repeat the exercise. Do you have any? Am I free to leave?
Am I free to leave?
If the answer is yes, then you can leave. If the answer is no, then you're under, then you're under arrest. It's a way essentially of calling up the police block. It escalates the situation, not in a way that is uncut, but it escalates it legally. It forces them to make a decision as to which route are they going to go.
And if they say you're not, then you ask them, what for am I being arrested?
Yeah, so they wasn't under arrest, but I had to go down.
If you're not under arrest, you're free to go.
So what'd you do?
Did you go with?
Leave, you're under arrest.
Yeah.
They don't have to say, in actuality, you are. But also, this comes to mind, I'd like to mention for those who come through the borders. It's just an aside, but it came to my mind because you elicited that reaction. When you come through the border, you know, they want to check your stuff sometimes before you come in. And they want to ask you questions before they will let you into the United States, which they have the right to do. And it's very impractical to get an attorney at that point. But I had, I have knowledge of someone
But I had, I have knowledge of someone who actually took this to the M.A.S., what he did. So he comes through the border all the time and they stopped it. They asked him, where have you been, what are you doing, whatever? So he says, he says, look, I don't want to talk to you. My luggage is there. If you want to search it, you're welcome to it, but I'm not going to talk to you. Okay, have a seat. So he sits down, waits about 15 minutes. They said, look, we want to, we want to come and search your bags. They started asking questions. He says, I don't want to answer your questions. He says, look, am I, am I under arrest? Am I, you're not free to leave until we go through your bags. I said, okay, go through my bags. He started leaving after they did his bags because they were asking questions. They, they went and they grabbed him, they arrested him, put him in a small room. And 15 minutes later, they came back and said, you're free to go. I said, so what happened? He said, well, we can't hold you. We have no reason to hold you and you can leave. So what ended up happening is he didn't answer any of their questions, but they did, you know, detain him for that period of time. They did search his, his bags and then he was able to leave. But what it shows you is, is that without a warrant, they could not hold you. If they had something, they would have gotten a warrant, arrested him, booked him and charged him with something. And this is at the border. So the point is, is that you, you know, they can't do it unless they have a reason to. If they arrest you, then they have to go through that whole nonsense of what it was for.
You may have to ask, are you free to leave more than once? Unfortunately, there was a recent case where someone was told he was free to leave and during the interview, at least changed their mind at some point and.
Is that what she thought?
Back across the room, they have a question back and then.
How do all these, these points of advice apply differently to American citizens, green card holders and foreign nationals? At the border, when an FBI agent was in.
The border is a different animal from domestically because the border, the nation state has the ability to control its borders to come to vote. What we've been talking about is essentially domestic law. That applies to people irrespective of immigration status.
Constitutional rights are constitutional rights for everyone. For what is at the border, even US citizens essentially have no rights? So it is true, the fourth amendment basically doesn't apply at the border. So it would take, take the border with the greatest assault within the country.
But also at the border, as the example showed, you really don't have to talk. They can search your stuff, they, you have to make us available, you know. Of course, you don't want to get in a fight with somebody, but you don't really have to answer questions.
But do they, can they confiscate your stuff like a computer?
They can do anything they want to because they're law. Whether it's legal.
Without suspicion.
Without any warrants or prior suspicions?
Even without suspicion.
Anything. They can, at the border, it's the nation state controlling its borders.
The latest sense about this in the, in the border context relating particularly to electronics, US versus Northern United States, there is no suspicion required. The fourth amendment doesn't apply for any intentional purposes at the border. Did you have a question here? No, you didn't have a question.
There are two concepts of people legality which are coming to my mind and I'm wondering if you can compare how they relate to these civil rights. There's finding statements that the FBI and maybe other police use. And then also under the Patriot Act, I had read that there are certain times when the FBI or investigators come to your property and examine it and search it and you are prohibited to tell anyone.
You're thinking of national security letters in particular?
Is that what they are?
So let's use that question as a springboard. Does anybody want to discuss the ways in which these different principles have changed particularly over the last 10 years? Whether that's through the Patriot Act, whether it's through the material support provisions, whether it's through the general guidelines governing FBI operations or more recent legislation since then?
Just a brief comment that the Constitution came into being in the United States was a very small country, an agrarian country. And it has been tested various times through wars and periods where there's been repression, but the people have been able to fight it back to the extent that we do have democracy, we do have rights that we're able to talk about here. But I'd suggest that we've never had a situation where the US has developed an imperial reach worldwide, which has only happened after World War II.
Dissent and speech as terrorism coupled with the authority to deny trials to people accused of terror related offenses essentially is a frontal assault on the notion of freedom, the idea that we live in a land of free. I think it is important for us to reconsider that notion. There have long been people for whom it's not been a democracy, quite frankly, right? I mean, the South has been free for maybe 15 years of our country's history. That was a long time ago. There are lots of ways in which default understandings that we might have assumed about the country we live in. I think it very much recall from the question over the last 10 years. And it goes beyond a matter of political policy being problematic. It really does start to change the character of our republic. And that's the context in which we are all operating, both as individual community members or as activists and organizers. And it's important to recognize that context as we go.
I might ask, I actually see you. Yeah, I just want to say something about the material support, terrorism laws, which I did refer to. And they are a real trap. They are, people, I think, are still operating in the post, the pre nine 11 in terms of mentality, in terms of what you can do. But these laws, of course, use terrorism in a very, very broad sense. Any intimidation to affect government operations, things like that. That includes a lot of what we consider to be dissent. And what they've been doing is taking situations in which people, these are all laws that are directed at ideology. There, of course, a lot of it has been spent trying to attack Islam and Muslim ideology. But it also includes other things, immigrants, peace activists, environmentalists, animal rights activists. These are all kinds of ideologies, oddly enough, that sometimes interfere with corporations. Is that why we're targeting them? And because of that, you're going to shut the, they, they want to shut down and suppress that kind of ideology. So the idea would be that you, if they can show that you have that kind of ideology, that's legal. You can, you can have an ideology. You can believe in animal rights. You can believe in these various things.
That's what the first amendment is about.
The first amendment says you can believe this stuff. You can then, well, couple it with an act. Let's say you have, you're interested in jihad as a theory, a Muslim theory. And you then go to take a trip to Jordan. Again, perfectly legal, nothing wrong with going to, but the government will then infer that because of your ideology, that trip to Jordan was in the, in support of terrorist activities. And that would be a crime. So it takes two legal, two legal activities, puts them together and makes a crime and you're not even aware of it. Now couple that with the conspiracy laws, all right? Conspiracy laws is an ingredient. And, and I just want to point that when they do that, when they, when they put the two together and make something illegal out of two legal acts, it's basically a thought crime. They're saying, you did a legal act, but at the time you're doing it, you were thinking of something else. And so it's that illegal thought that's going on in your mind that's going to get you caught. Now, if you, you elevate it to the highest level, this would be the conspiracy to commit a thought crime. Now you have two people, both with the same ideology, thinking about doing something bad. And that is the conspiracy to commit the thought crime. Now at that abstract level, it is very hard to fight against that, particularly if you're putting your ideologies up on Facebook. I just came back from New Bern to, where they had a sentencing of three young men who were caught in exactly this kind of situation. One got 15 years, one got 32 years, one got 45 years for essentially taking a trip to Jordan and posting things on their Facebook and the government saying, this is part of a conspiracy. You were conspiring to commit a thought crime. You have to take this very, very seriously and think about what has happened to this country in, in the 10 years for that.
And then before I go to the next question, I'll just remind folks again, the dual purpose of today's event is both to equip you with the tools you need to assert your rights when the need presents itself and also to empower you as change agents to raise your voices and discuss these issues with your friends and neighbors.
We're working justice outside of the justice system in which you have institutions, academic institutions, that are using their own mechanisms to suppress certain people, certain groups. Because recently there was a girl, I think in North Carolina University. And she was sexually harassed by a male student who, in turn, she went to the administration, you know, to get justice for herself. And the way the student protected himself was saying that she was affiliated with terrorist groups. The, yeah, it was crazy. The university panicked, called the FBI, wanted to sue them. So that, that's what's happening outside of this system within other, you know, institutions.
And it demonstrates how problematic accusation can be, right? In, in the sense that when we talk about this arena where you have incoherent crimes, it doesn't take an act, right? So accusation, especially in those villages, pass the defense authorization, accusation is essentially enough to deny someone a trial, right? And so again, it gets to this question of whether or not it makes sense to think of ourselves as a legitimate degree. Mr. Murray and Mel, you guys want to say anything? I just realized everybody on the panel is looking.
It's been how long they may have some time afterwards, about five minutes. Okay. But on this issue, I don't know, I don't remember the history now, but there was in the past, in the 50s, there was these, you know, youth organizations, like the Boy Scouts and others. But they had specific names that their job was to, you know, tell about other people in the context of social life, whether it's a university or other places. And this is kind of going on now in, in our modern times in the sense that you hear the FBI a lot of times when they come to people, they say, well, you're, we got some information from someone. They won't disclose. Sometimes they'll say it's a neighbor of yours or that you don't know which neighbor. But the point is, is that because we live in a, really in a, in a police state, you have to understand, everyone is afraid, okay? Everyone is afraid. The Muslim community is afraid because it's, it's under the doctrine. The non-Muslim community or other people are afraid that, look, nine 11 was caused by Muslims, so anyone could potentially be a threat. The state is pushing this, the politicians, to get people afraid so that they can pass their laws and, and, and the rich can make their money and so forth. So everyone's afraid. And so you have to be careful in that type of setting. One thing I wanted to say is that no one should accept this. You should at least speak out against it. Why? Because if you, if you accept it, you're, you're accepting what's happening. And, and if you raise your voice at least, it causes people to think twice. So whether, you know, it depends on the context, you have to do it appropriately. But the point is, it's like, you know, I mean, an oppressor who is trying to oppress his victim. What kills the oppressor is the victim is not giving up, not, you know, that's what, you know, you need to do. Otherwise, if there's total capitulation, then, you know, we've given in. Excuse me, can I, I'd like to make a point about that. Everybody in the room who knows what the definition of terrorist is, please raise your hand.
I have no idea what a terrorist is.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, you're the only home person.
Oh, what is it?
It's a good person.
The government says he's a terrorist.
Oh, that's right. So even in using, even in using the term, what we're doing is like a women's liberation group calling itself hoes and bitches. It's been an ideological transformation using a word that doesn't have a definition, the way they used the word communism in the 1950s to apply to anybody that they didn't like. And so terrorists are animal rights activists, terrorists are peace activists, terrorists are anybody that is, Steve said, is ideologically, and even not ideologically, because you also have a bureaucracy that's huge and needs to feed itself. You need to have grist to go through the mill. And so you've got all of these folks making a living on finding something to do. So, you know, setting people up, changing meetings of words, all this stuff, everybody patting each other on the back and getting promotions. Why wouldn't you do that? Everybody is. So it becomes a self fulfilling sort of prophecy. And what has to happen, the changes is we've got to deconstruct all of that. And I don't know how to talk about this without using the word terrorism. But I would like to use politically motivated violence because every government in the world uses politically motivated violence. And if that's what the problem is, you can't stop politically motivated violence with politically motivated violence. You've got to stop the political conditions that give rise to the violence, I think. So at any rate, I just want people to begin thinking of really how deeply this thinking has penetrated our society to the point that we end up abusing ourselves, building, which that we use, just a thought.
I believe that looking at those issues from a philosophical, you know, standpoint is useless in my view, except for the sake of intellectual fulfillment and maybe intellectual understanding. But I believe our nation has proven itself to be literally retarded. Retarded in the literal sense. It takes the nation 30 years to get to know what the government has done in its name. And then 30 more years to acknowledge it. And then 30 more years to do something to correct it, which makes it worse. We are a retarded nation of children. You scare the nation, they get scared. You give them promises, they believe you. So the government is using political lollipops to comfort us and political BB guns to scare us. We need to mature as a nation. And this maturity is only going to happen if the collective conscience of our collective communities get together and push back at every corner. You know, we are, the government is oppressing all of us, balcrum, if you will, wholesale. And we are pushing back in retail. It's never going to work. It's never going to work. You leave the niggers, I'm sorry, to defend themselves. It takes them more than 100 years to get out of the oppressive systems that people use laws to make them live under oppressions. But it takes much less time if everybody is concerned about everybody. That is not there. The governments are still successfully able to divide and conquer. And we, because we are acting, I'm sorry, like children, I'm talking about communities, not individuals. Because we're acting like children, a lollipop or a BB gun can work on us. We have to get out of that mentality of being afraid of our government. We need the government to be afraid of us. Let us act like Egyptians. This is the only way that a community of people who are able to push back are going to be able to push back the government. The government has been encroaching on not only our freedom, they started off nine 11, October, 20, 21, I'm sorry, 2001. In October, the first Patriot Act, they said, it's only against Muslims and terrorists, don't worry about it. Then the Patriot II was, oh, it's Muslims and their neighbors, right? And community centers and organizations and this and this. Now with the Defense Authorization Act, it's also going to include Canada and New Mexico. What are we waiting for? Now it includes everybody. So unless we are willing to go beyond the comfort of philosophy, the comfort of giving it a laugh or laughing it off, that comfort should not give us any comfort. We should be troubled, we should have less sleep than we do and we should have more food on, more meat on the ground standing up and speaking up against the government encroachment against our freedom. I had a very positive relationship, I'm sorry, with the so-called FBI field office here in Washington. We hosted them, we gave them community town meetings and take them for lunch and dinner and all of the hoopla that you think of. And at the end of the day, when they want something, they are after something. So I am an imam in, in, in one of the largest Islamic centers in the area here. And here is a member of my community, after one of the prayers, come to them, imam, I want to tell you something. What? Oh, there is, there is somebody who told me that somebody who are both Muslims, the second somebody wants to shoot a US base in Fort, what's it, Fort Mine, Fort, Fort Dixies. No, 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 the one in, Fort Bedouar, down here on Route 1. And I said, okay, when did you hear that? He said, a few days ago. I said, and why do you talk to me? Why didn't you talk to the police, FBI? And he says, no, I thought you were my imam, I have to talk to you. I said, okay, come, go come to the office, call the liaison FBI officer and gave him the mic, the phone to talk to the person, to get first-hand information. And the person said, this is so and so, can I talk to you later, to the FBI? Can I talk to you later because my wife is in the car, right? And the FBI agent said, yeah. And then two days later, the FBI agent called me and he said, oh, imam, thank you very much. Thank you for letting us know. I said, okay, did you pursue this person? Did you make any arrests? He said, no, 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 we're not pursuing it. So they went after me. They were after me knowing and not telling the authorities. They were not after an actual crime, they were just fishing and they knew.
That was FBI that, that said that.
He was probably, he was an informant, probably.
Says you.
They were testing me.
Did you call a lawyer?
So what I'm saying is the government is willing to develop a crime, develop a conspiracy in the FBI headquarters and then give it to an FBI agent to execute through informants, fund it, plan it, bring the materials, rent houses, bring explosives and put all of this in somebody's apartment or lab or anywhere and then call their FBI other friends to come and arrest him. And here's a crime, we're successfully. And here's a crime we're successfully persecuting, not prosecuting.
So I'm going to ask each of our panelists just to wrap up with a set of final comments and we'll move to the next panel. Two things I just want to interject first, just a caution to each of our panelists in particular, to mind our language. It is important, we've each heard, I think, some terms that can be particularly offensive in particular communities, and even if we mean them partially, these are very dangerous words to use.
I meant it from...
Of course.
...the historic perspective, how people...
It's easier to use words like that if you're in the community that's been used so extremely often. So just be very careful before you use words that people...
Also, retarded is also a word you shouldn't use.
I included a note, I meant it from the air. Having said all that, I want to jump on one piece that Peter had said a minute ago. And then I'm just going to invite everybody to share closing remarks on this part of the panel, where we then hear about some particular cases illustrating these sorts of government abuses. Peter was talking about the industry that has emerged around intelligence collection and surveillance. And I want to just remind people that it was exactly 41 years ago, not today, but last year was the 40th year anniversary of President Eisenhower's departing address to the White House. It is absolutely crucial to go back and read or listen to President Eisenhower's departing remarks in 1961. This was the Supreme Allied Commander of World War II, learning the country as he left the White House about the creation of a military-industrial complex. And he saw, he spoke about its sought influence, which is Lockheed Martin saying, "Let's go bomb the country so we can study more missiles." But there's also, and this is the part that people forget, the unsought influence of the military-industrial complex. And what that looks like are your friends who maybe worked for defense contracting firms in Northern Virginia. Half of Northern Virginia institutionally is defense contracting. And the unsought influence of that section of the industry is people trying to keep their jobs, right? You could think of the co-optation of labor by the national security industry as one of the greatest political coups of the last generation. And realize or recognize that move as you see it play out before you. Before we go to the panelists, I see one question in the middle.
I wanted to know, I was born in the South and there's a strong gun culture there. And, you know, I definitely had my guns and I enjoy going out, you know, shooting and out. But what I wanted to ask was, is there some kind of legal framework, like sovereign citizens and a lot of right-wing groups, they really, they have their guns, like in a whole other level, and they have gun clubs or whatever. But I imagine that if at Vammas G, I set up a gun club, then, you know, now down South, if down South, it's fine, you know?
You can't even have a pain bowl club.
Right, so that's what I was going to ask.
Pain bowl club.
Is there a legal framework to say, "Well, they do it, so why can't I?"
Let me see if I can answer that. We all know who blew up the federal building in Oklahoma City. It was a terrorist. From where?
American.
Buffalo. Timothy McVeigh. After that happened, Bill Clinton used that as the basis to pass what became the material support statute, it was called the Anti-Terrorism and Effective Death Penalty Act of 1997. That act made it a crime to support foreign terrorist organizations. Not domestic terrorist organizations, foreign terrorist organizations. You getting my drift?
And I think it's a really important point because it is so deliberately done that we don't, we have plenty of domestic terrorist groups. We got the Ku Klux Klan, we got the Arabi Ashi, we got plenty of hate groups. We don't go after that. That is protected speech. These, and I've heard judges say that, they have a Second Amendment right to those guns and go out there and shoot the ones, they have a First Amendment right to hate anybody they want to hate. But you cannot do that to a foreign terrorist organization.
Or without its limits, back it up.
Well, yeah, that's how they do it. So that this is, appears to be neutral, it isn't neutral at all. And you've just got to understand that. That's part of why we know that these laws are not legitimate terrorist laws. They are aimed at particular communities and particular ideologies. Peace activists are domestic too. Right, but they, going after the peace activists in the Midwest based on their contacts with foreign terrorist organizations. There are civil wars going on in parts of the country, in different parts of the world. And if you try to bring peace, you're going to deal with both sides. And one of those is favoring our government, the other side is the terrorists.
So I can't starve one at Vammas G?
Look, I want to answer your question, right? You're absolutely correct, but the hypocrisy which you're identifying is not limited to guns or violence or anything like that. That hypocrisy can be seen across the board. We saw when the, you know, people wanted to set up an Islamic center, a kind of Muslim YWCA, actually modeled on a Jewish community center in Manhattan. And you saw what the reaction to that was. That's what? That must be an act of terrorism. So clearly, this word is just, it doesn't have a definition, it's just being thrown around. And it applies, obviously, in the proximate case, we're talking about how it affects the Muslim community. But it's not limited to the Muslim community. It's still being done against African-Americans, no matter what their religion is. It's being done against people who are outside the mainstream of political thought, not just on the left, but on the right. It's the way that the people who have power keep everybody else out of power.
And one piece, just to blend some element of complexity here, you know, terrorists within the US, flagged by DHS, include supporters of Ron Paul, right? There is some element of equal opportunity to the government of that need, right? And that shouldn't make us feel any better, but it should make us realize that we have a great many allies who we might not necessarily think of as like the allies in this particular struggle, right? People who might not see eye to eye with us on a great many things, who have similarly endured, you know, the same sort of stain by reputation.
We need to turn America around so that the people have the final say, not the government. We want a government by the people, for the people, at the service of the people, not the opposite. We don't want people intimidated by their government, fearing their government, and hiding from their government, and trying to stay away from anything to do with the government. We want people to run the government and to scare the government. This is not going to happen unless we push back wholesale, not retail.
I'm certainly in full support of everything that you've said, though one thing I just want to add, by way of allies and the opportunity to build an American spring, is the particular presence and solidarity of the Occupy movement, which has similarly been targeted by state oppression in a lot of different contexts, whether, you know, tear gassed by the Oakland Police Department on the eve of the Patriot Act's 10-year anniversary, and we've seen Occupy sites being surveilled and monitored by local police departments around the country. There seems to be, at least circumstantially, the possibility of a federally coordinated crackdown on Occupy sites toward the end of November. And if you haven't yet visited an Occupy site near you, I encourage you to do it and to connect with people there, because those are all allies who you might be able to reach out to in the future, during downtown.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. One is about the know-your-rights and the FBI that came to mind. We alluded to it, but another thing that should really get you thinking is that when you talk to the, to law enforcement, the FBI or any other law enforcement, you can't lie to them. But they can lie to you. You have to understand that they can lie to you. There is nothing that they will have to answer to in court if they lie to you. And that's to coax you to talk, or whatever it is. So just be mindful of that, why it's better to, you know, shut your mouth than to talk. The other point that I just want to wrap up with is that someone else also alluded to it, and why is it that less people are here, other than, you know, if we weren't successful in bringing people up, that's one thing. The reason is that in our community, the Muslim community that is, and I'm just, on behalf of the Muslim community, I may know why the Muslim community is aloof to what's happening. There's different reasons, I'm not going to go into it, I have my own view. But each one of us should be asking ourselves, why aren't our communities, meaning wherever the community comes from, whether it's an ethnic community, or a social community, or a school community, you know, education, whatever, just think, why is that not happening? Because America is changing, and again, this is not NCPCF speaking, this is Ashraf Nivani. We can't afford our empire anymore, we're going bankrupt. Things are going to happen, you know, in the next 20, 30 years that no one has expected, no one wants to happen to America. What are we going to do as a part of that? Are we going to help to let the system cave in on itself? Or are we going to try to revive what we believed were good things about, you know, America, given the new America that we have, which has different minorities, that has different groups? But believe me, things are going to change. And I'll tell you why I believe that's the case, and I'll end with that in this just aside, is that, you know, for so long, the US has had a specific hegemony over the world, for whatever reason. Yes, they call it a new colonial empire, call it whatever you want. But the point is, is that at its height, it couldn't solve the Palestinian-Israeli conflict. At its height, it couldn't keep Mubarak in office for more than 30 years. At its height, it hasn't solved the world's problems and things are getting worse. So what happens when we have not, we don't have the ability to control others as we did before? What's going to happen? We're going to look internally, like Malcolm X said, there's not going to be a war over race, you know? He said it's going to be those who have and those who don't. So he called it a class warfare. But the point is, is that we have to think, why aren't we here? Why don't we want to see things change? And it's not, you know, called the revolution, it's to say that things are going to change. We should be at the forefront of seeing that change is coming. How are we going to be a part of that? I just wanted to mention one thing that we haven't really taken up here, but I think it's a very important part of what's going on today, and that is prison conditions. This also parallels what has happened with the civil rights. And from the National Coalition's point of view, we have three campaigns. We have one against preemptive prosecution, that we've talked about, we're doing profiling, and we're doing prisoner abuse. And what has happened since 9/11 is that there is completely new approach to housing, warehousing prisoners, that includes the experience of Abu Ray, and the torturing, it includes different techniques of breaking people, pre-trial, putting people in solitary confinement, pre-trial. This is unheard of, until a person is so mentally damaged after years in there that it's very hard to defend yourself, it's hard to cooperate with your order. To warehouse people in a six-by-eight box in solitary confinement for the most trivial kind of offenses, simply saying something at some point, posting something on Facebook. These kind of things are done, not because it has anything, any legitimate penal purpose, but it is there because it is necessary for the government to show that certain classes of people, certain groups of people are less than, less than, that they are second-class, third-class citizens, and their rights can be taken away, and they can be denied. And that is, it is a symbol to me of what America has become, where we are driving away, we are creating classes of people that are second slaves, in a sense. We have, there's this wonderful book out about an analysis of what the penal system has become called the New Jim Crow, in which we've gotten free of the traditional Jim Crow laws from down the South, only to replace them by the kind of Jim Crow laws that have, are applied to people who've been through the penal system. And if we can run enough people through the prison system, we effectively have the system back again. So we should not be unmindful of that, and we're going to have three people who are going to speak to that. And I just want you to please stay around and listen to this, to their experience, because it is very important that we listen to this experience and understand their point of view, what they are going through.
Yeah, I want to just say something really hopeful, and that's that we got here through the last 200 years because the American people have extraordinary resilience. And the ability to struggle for the promise of the Constitution really hasn't delivered yet. To the extent that it does, it's been ordinary people demanding that the promise be kept. And like Fred Buckles said, those who want freedom and justice without struggle are like those who want the crops to grow without the rain. This is the fight. The other thing is that this Occupy movement has really changed the debate in this country in ways that is brand-new. There's now a 99% and a 1%, we are the majority, even if we don't know it. The other thing I want to say is that it's now very clear, which it wasn't a few years ago, that we can, I'm from the South Side of Chicago. I used to pick up Michelle Robinson's garbage before she met Barack. And Barack was a social worker in my neighborhood because we were so distraught, we needed him to come help us out from steel mills that were closed down and all that. And what I can tell you about that is that we have elected the smartest, most telegenic, most wonderful captain that the Titanic has ever had. But that guy doesn't own the ship. And he doesn't determine the ports of call. And the owners of the ship are the ones that decide what happens on the Titanic and can control the iceberg. And what we saw on Wall Street, your opinions about the government notwithstanding, the government doesn't run this place. We saw who runs it, and the Occupy people told us who runs it. And we've got to start thinking that way, because this is a struggle of all of the ordinary people in a way to give us a little more democratic space so we can live in the richest country the world has ever seen. But it sure doesn't feel that way when you stand on the street trying to get into this library, does it?
Absolutely. Brother Dear, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I'd like to wrap up. I want to tie some of the points that we heard earlier into a single thread. When we try to control our children, we don't ever define the boogeyman. And that's the reason why the government has never defined terrorism. I have a definition of terrorism, and I actually think it's a pretty good one. And that's when people use violence against innocent non-combatants for the purposes of promoting some cause, political cause usually, not necessarily. The reason the government will never accept this definition of terrorism is because while it covers some acts of terrorism that they would like to prosecute, it also covers a lot of stuff that they do and stuff that their friends do all the time. And they, therefore, they're averse to having that definition. Now, the reason, and Shayna, I really appreciate your point about the NDAA, National Defense Authorization Act, because you have to understand how it takes all the things that this organization was formed to fight and carries it to an even scarier level. All those people up there on that board, all the crimes, in some cases real crimes, in some cases imagined crimes, all the things that they're being persecuted for are things that anybody in this room cannot be persecuted for because somebody who has the ear of the government accuses us of something. We don't have, it's no longer necessary to do anything. You explain how doing two innocent acts or three innocent acts can be formed together to be considered a criminal act. Well, now you don't even have to do any of that. All you need is somebody who has a political or personal grievance against you enough to go to somebody in power and say, "So-and-so, blah, blah, blah." And the next thing you know, you've disappeared because you're being held without charge. And it'll be one year before you'll get a chance to get your case reviewed. And I'm not totally clear, perhaps the lawyers on this panel can tell me exactly, you know, who's going to hear this review and is there any chance by which, it's probably not much of a review in the end, if it boils down to it. So what that means is, we need an American spring. And I hope that, you know, I think that's what we're working for, and it's what we need everybody in this room and all of your friends and neighbors to participate in. Thank you.